Okay, well, guess what? It is seven thirty and we are all here, so we'll start the meeting. I'm gonna have my son, Simon, gavel listening tonight. Let me hold that for you. Then go ahead and do the honor. Very good. All right, thank you. Good job. Let me shake your hand. Good job. Call the meeting to order tonight, seven thirty, June twentieth, twenty twenty-three. It's the regular city council meeting of the city of West Liberty, Iowa. And for a roll call we have with us tonight, Mayor Lieutenant Kara McFerrin and city council members Ashley Smith and Josh Schultz. Council members Dominguez and Martinez are not able to join us tonight. We'll start with approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Seconded. Moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries three to zero. Will ask for an approval of the consent agenda, which includes the city council meeting minutes of our last meeting and the main sewer reported their motion to approve. Much appreciated.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve. Any discussion? It's good that we have no issues. Uh, sewer issues. And all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, sorry.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries three to zero. Item four is a beer and liquor license for La Chiva Loca. Twelve-month Class C alcohol license, a new application pending inspection by Building Inspector Terry Hurd. Like to get a little conversation about this, but is there a motion to approve this application?
Motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve this. Alcohol license application. Mr. Brooks, is that you? Could you fill us in on the? What you know about this?
That's not one of my brothers here.
No, it is not.
It's an existing building. All they are doing is they redid the kitchen portion of it and put new. What are they called? They're like the hot plates, like the oven over top the oven, so they had to input that. They actually own a business in Riverside. They already have an alcohol license in Riverside as well. Um, and Terry said he wanted me to get it put on the agenda so that once he does that inspection, they can open and their liquor license is valid for them to start selling.
So what?
This is the former El Cerepe, right?
Yes.
That building.
Okay.
Yep.
Great. Perfect. Well, looking forward to another restaurant going in there.
Yep, and I have met with the owner multiple times. She's very excited to come to West Liberty. So they've been taking their time getting everything ready. They finally got everything submitted and quite before you did any.
They've been at their establishment in Riverside and it's nice.
I hadn't heard them, but I looked it up online and it was very highly rated.
Yeah.
That's very, that's awesome. Uh, Chief Whirling, do you have any? Any concerns about this?
It's a brand new license, Mr. Mayor, so we wouldn't have any background to provide, so.
Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second to approve this alcohol license. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries three to zero. Item number five is approval of cigarette permits for local businesses. Um, we need to do these one at a time, I assume.
No, they can all be approved at one time.
Okay, all of them. So we're look, we're approving cigarette permits for Casey General Store, Jeff's Market, Gary BP, New York Dollar Store, and the Dollar General Store. Are there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second. Moved and seconded to approve these cigarette permits. Any discussion? Chief, is there any concern about this?
The county deputies are in charge of doing compliance for tobacco. Tobacco compliance was completed in February. Uh, Gary BP, Jeff's Market, and Casey General Store were all trying to be compliant. Um, the deputy was unable to perform a compliance check at New York Dollar and Dollar General did receive a citation.
What does that, what does that mean for purposes of this application? Is uh, is that? Concerning or how do, how do you interpret that?
Well, I mean, they were trying to be non-compliant on a setup. By. But that could be just one time that one person made a mistake. Um, I don't know there to be a chronic issue at Dollar General, but. We don't do the tobacco compliance. I don't, I don't think I know of any other complaints that I've received about them. So this is the only one that I had knowledge of.
Council, any questions or discussion about that?
I mean, is it, is it standard practice to approve permits for cigarette sales even if you don't have evidence of their compliance?
So we have had multiple of our facilities that sell tobacco sale at some point in time. Um, if they are chronic offenders, then at that point in time, it would be something that the county would look into and then they would bring it to city council.
Okay.
Sounds good. Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second to approve cigarette permits for all five of these establishments. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries three to zero. We'll move on to reports and we'll start with you, Mr. Ford.
Lot going on right now in the engineering world in West Liberty, so I'll kind of go through it as quick as I can here. Well, number two, that's the one in the powerhouse. So we're having a pre-construction meeting with Northway this Friday. And then next week, I think it's Thursday, they're having a pre-construction meeting on Phase Two, which is the building improvement around the well and F G construction will be in that one. So both two are moving along quite well now. West Liberty Foods is gonna be re-casing a well this fall and they needs help. So the last couple of years, they've been kind of going through a process with the city. Be used well number four, the one in their parking lot. We said we wouldn't even entertain the idea until well two was up and running. Alright, so hopefully by fall, well two's up and running. And then they could potentially use well four. In the meantime, we have to go get a permit for well four because they want to put bigger power and bigger um. Pumps and motor in there temporarily. Then they, they use it and then they have to take all that out and get it back running the way it was. Got some hoops to jump through. We're gonna, we've got the plans done as of today. The plans will go to the D N R. They'll go to Ed and others to look at and then hopefully we get a permit and if everything moves forward in the fall. Probably need between Lee and I and you guys, some kind of an agreement with West Liberty Foods.
Sure.
In writing, but we don't have that done. We've kind of got the, I guess the. The big picture around it, not the details. So all that, we will want to move the permit forward because the. Data bio was way backed up in their permitting department. Alright, so that's the well business. Um, naughty. Uh, let me, let me go back. Another West Liberty Foods issue is we've got a, we did a facility plan for your wastewater treatment plant three or four years ago, three years ago. It's in your budget, in your. C I P. And part of that was about fifty percent of that budget was gonna be paid for by West Liberty Foods based on the loadings and flows. The person that was involved with that was. Um. Alberti, who's now retired.
Mm-hmm.
And Michelle Bonney, who's still there. So I had a meeting with Michelle on a different subject just recently and told her the same thing, that we were gonna. In, in July, when the new fiscal year comes, we're gonna press forward on that, meaning press forward, we're gonna ask the city to start design. And at that time, we'll need an agreement with them saying, here, you're gonna pay your, your fair share. And how do you want to pay your fair share? Because we never got the how, whether we raise rates or whether they do it in another manner. Just giving you a heads up, that's all being worked. I did talk to Michelle Bonney this week, almost what I just told you, I told her. And we're all on the same page.
Great.
Alright, um, naughty circle. Another one, we've got the design on that naughty circle with Gibson and Division Street. We did design, survey design, we gave Lee what we call ninety percent plans today. Um, and then we gave her cost estimate, which was twice as high as what we had given her five years ago or whatever it was during that C I B. But then she asked us, could we have given her that cost estimate or to split that into pieces so she could look at it in pieces? And we did that today also. So we think when we come back to you in July, I think between us, we'll come up with a, a good plan. What needs to be done first? What's the highest priority? We think maybe one of the, the Sycamore Street, I'm sorry, Gibson, has a sewer underneath it that's been televised and it looks like it needs to be lined. Maybe that needs to get lined first anyway and it might fit in together. So that's, that's that project. And then the last one we have is City Hall Expansion.
Can I interrupt you real quick on that, on that last project? Um, it seemed tricky to me when I was over there, the sidewalks. Did you come up with a? Solution for that?
We have a pretty good plan.
Okay.
Um, the trickiest part in my mind is the cross street, Sycamore. Is that where you were thinking?
Yes, that's what I'm talking about.
Big trees. Uh, we have, and we gave Lee a conceptual plan that showed sidewalk on one side of that road. Where we'd take out a couple of trees. But the other side of the road, um, I thought the fence looks like it's in city right of way.
I think that's the side that I'm mostly thinking about.
It is not in city right of way. The right of way is crazy in that area. But that's an area of that, and I, I told her today, the part of the plan's not worked out, why it's not a hundred percent.
Sure.
Is Sycamore. That needs a little bit more work.
Mike.
But we've done quite a bit. We've surveyed it all.
Okay.
And we've laid it out how it could be done.
Okay.
And we think it's a reasonable plan. But it was only putting sidewalk on one side, taking a couple of very big trees.
My personal thought is perhaps sidewalk on both sides, if it's at all possible.
The only way it will be possible is to acquire right of way, not, not, not acquire easement right of way. So it's, it's worth, it's worth looking into, but as you know, sometimes I can, that, that might help us with the um. With priority of what goes first.
Sure.
That might need a little time to.
Sure.
To buy the right of way.
Well, that's just why I ask, because I know it's.
Yeah.
Looked.
That is a tricky, but you're right.
Yeah.
The rest of it, we're looking at making everything else A D A compliant. I think we've got pretty good, that's on the plans. That, that little piece that you just picked off is the one piece we need a little work. Right now, we did it for ease of sake. We put a sidewalk on one side and we just stopped it where the city doesn't have right.
Sure.
Alright. Okay, uh, go back to City Hall. I know Tara, our architect, who did this part of the first phase, um, had a conversation with Lee and I know there's a meeting in the middle of July. On the next phase, which is expansion, which obviously needs to be done to make everything work a little better. So I don't know exactly what that is. I know Tara's done some. Revolutionary sketch type thing, so I think she's gonna get together with Lee and you guys and try to, try to figure out what the next steps there are.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thanks, Neil.
Um. You didn't touch on Rainbow Max and you want to talk about that later when we hit?
I thought.
Okay.
Right, right.
Yeah.
I'm gonna touch on that with the past.
Sounds good. Great, well, thank you. Mr. Foley, we'll move on to city staff reports. Council, you have the reports in front of you. Um, I would like to start by asking first if you have any specific questions for anyone.
Um, who did the, like the well project and the road work ahead newsletters? Is that for me?
That one, he gets.
No.
Oh, we.
Yeah.
Oh.
They're like, oh, it looks really nice. Yeah. I like, yeah, it's very helpful.
We've been doing that on a lot of projects lately and the project, especially when the projects get to construction, we've been that kind of thing so that people can have one page and kind of get it all.
And then we do post that on our, our website, then. We could have that. They send it to him on a weekly basis and then we get it uploaded to our website, so we're, you know, keep our community up to date on the project.
Yeah. That's great. That communication, I think, helps so much. Somebody asked me, uh, this is a little bit of a sidetrack, but somebody asked me, what day is Rag Brag coming through town? And so then I, I sent them, I thought, this is great. The city actually has a page that talks about all the information and has all the links and the info about Rag Brag. It's really good. It's good communication. Appreciate that.
The only thing I will add on those, if you guys have something you want added to that, that Rag Brag coming in town and you want something like that on there. Um, we do it for Burlington and they will do that a lot. They'll add something to it or want us to add something so that when people do look at their website.
Hmm. Good.
Thank you.
Any other questions by council on any of these reports? City Manager Kurtz, do you want to share anything about? Uh, your report or any, or any of these?
Um, well, um, I do have, um, so Craig Jurgens is on, if you would happen to have any questions with the wastewater treatment. He is available on. On, uh, as you know, um, just going over, I mean, the, he's communicating, you know, they're gonna start their second round. Uh, this is towards the N P D E S permits that we strength him have been working with Craig on. Um, and then they've got their, again, going down, just the operation pieces, um.
What, what is that permit renewal? What is N P D S?
I can, I can let you know about that. Basically, uh, our renewal period normally lasts four to six years. And the D N R reviews all of your basically data and then is to a new permit every four to six years. So in this period, when it gets close to that, we have to enter three different sets of data for lab testing, which is pretty expensive and pretty extravagant. But they require that. I think our permit renewal comes up, uh, about October of this year. So we have to have this testing done ahead of time. And it's very expensive. It's like twenty-five hundred dollars each set.
You anticipate?
Another thing I wanted to.
Oh, with that at all, or?
Excuse me?
So. You anticipate any issues with that at all, or it's all going?
No, I think we'll be fine with all of that. Uh, as far as the last issue I put down there on that, the, as far as the A T S breaker. That is the substation basically coming into the plant. So basically, I think we have, I don't know exactly what it is, twelve thousand volts probably or whatever coming into the plant. You go through the transformer and that basically drops it down to where we can feed the plant with different power out of its four sixty type bolts, most of it. And that trip, that breaker's been tripping out frequently, so. They said with the keeps, well, it costs six, six to eight hundred dollars every time they have to come in, reset it. And they said, well, these times it will not reset. And as I put in there, it's gonna take four to six weeks if we did need to actually replace it. And we'd have to run off the generator that whole time, so that's kind of why we put that in the budget.
We, um, so Craig and, and we had talked about this. This has been, um, on and off the budget a couple of times. Uh, we certainly, as you can hear from Craig, we, we can't, you know, push that project off any longer. Um, I give Craig the go-ahead to get it ordered because again, the time limits on getting these, this, this equipment. Um, it's gonna come in, into our next fiscal year. But again, because of the timeframe of getting the equipment, we just, because we're continually having more and more trips, we don't, we don't want to take any more risk of, you know, waiting any longer to get that upgraded taken care of. So I appreciate Craig and, you know, staying consistent, making sure that we didn't lose sight of this and we can get this taken care of, so.
Excellent.
Yeah.
And I've been there twenty-five years and I think that actual substation might have been there more than thirty-five or forty. I don't know for sure, but it's been a long time.
Did you want to add one thing on that N P D S permit? So they're making Craig do these three rounds of testing, expensive testing, but what they're looking for is anything that they think is not, um, that would have any chance, and I mean any chance of having a problem in the next five years. And if they find one thing, then they're gonna make you do testing for the rest of the five years. But what we do for you, and we don't have a contract yet, but we'll have one very shortly with you. Um, once all this testing's done, we will put the models together for D N R and help them decide if any of those parameters are really serious or not. Because the more people look at them, the smarter the people are looking at them, the more they can guide them away from testing because they're not sure. So we help almost every city we work with to try to. Hmm, I guess the word would be make sure D N R thoroughly looks through and make sure that they're not asking for you to do testing that maybe you should, may not have to do. And their rules are very strict and we can't get around their rules. There's no possible, they very rarely would ever let you around. But sometimes you can convince them that the way the testing is, one test was a bad test, well, we throw this test out and it's well within your rules. And we do it a lot. So that's where we, once Craig gets all this, I, I actually don't do the work. I've seen the letters afterwards, but we've got two or three process engineers in Des Moines and that's one of their specialties is to try to.
Great.
Make that work out.
So in the next report here, um, with the water and sewer department, you can see that they've been very busy. Um, we've had a lot of, um, as you know, we've had a large, uh, water move here last, uh, Friday evening. Um, and that's what led to us having to have a, a boil advisory placed on within a, a small radius, fortunately. Um, and I appreciate the communications of getting that information up to explain, uh, boil advisories and boil, um, orders are two different types of, um, situations. Um, but again, the doors were posted with that information. Um, communications, just to make sure to have people check their doors for that information. Um, there are some things that we can improve upon, um, so I made notes from that piece of that communication. But again, it's one of those things that, you know, when one person gets it on their door, then there's, you know, is trying to improve on the fact that there's not confusion, that it's an order versus an advisory and that it's not the entire community, it's just a section, so. Um, the good news is, is we don't have them very often, so. But we learn from when we do and what we can do to improve that education or communication around those things.
Yeah.
Um, the other thing is, is that it's, I'm happy to report that the Six and Miller water leaks, um, they have been fixed and completed, so, um. Hopefully, we, we no longer have any trickling water or water running into, uh, individuals' yards there. So we'll keep an eye and make sure those, but that has been a little over, I think, two years that they have struggled with trying to get that corrected. And so they were able to finally get everything fixed. Um, some of it has to do with, um, some homeowners participate in the insurance program. Um, and, and working with that program in order to get approval with the contractor. So sometimes that takes a little bit, but it's well worth it because it picks up a bigger percentage of the cost from those, from the property owners breaks, so. Um, and then again, last week, uh, well, number three was down. Uh, the pump went down. It was kind of a crazy time because at the same time, well, number three went down. Uh, we get a phone call from West Liberty Foods needing to utilize one of our wells because they are not able to use their well. And, um, Danny and I worked closely with, um, the CEO and the other members of their team over there, um, explaining that, you know, we, we want to be assisting them, but unfortunately with us being only working with one well, we didn't couldn't take the opportunity of straining that well and then losing our wells is for the community. Uh, but Danny worked quickly to get, um, the equipment repaired. It was an impeller. Um, he would be best to explain it, but clearly a very important piece that makes the pump work. And so, um, they, they got that up and running and then they did the bacteria testing and it all came back clear. So as of Monday, we were good to go and then we reported over to West Liberty Foods that we were backed up. So if they found themselves in a situation, just to please reach out to us and we'll, we'll assist when we can. And again, like we said, we're working, I, I did talk to, uh, Mr. Aiken about that we, you know, working with the other well to get it ready. So, you know, hopefully if we would lose one of those and we've got the backup, but. So keeping that good communication going between, you know, us and their organization to make sure that, you know, we're not saying no for, this is what we can do at this time and. Um, so we got them communicated to on that, so. And as you can also see with that department, they're crossing over and they're assisting other departments in street projects, working with concrete. So again, that's just, uh, what I like to see is, you know, is that working and crossing over between departments and helping each other, assisting each other and. Uh, that's one thing Danny and Adam have a good work relationship that they, and likewise they'll pull me from time to time of his department and help out with concrete work and sidewalks and, um, they had a couple of big sinkholes that they had identified too that we did work with, so. Um, I don't know if we have any other questions on that. Um, and then you have, um, a safety committee report. Brittany's here. She's the secretary. Um, since you can answer any questions you may have with the committee report. Again, that group is doing a fantastic job staying on top of those safeties, of safety information, wanting to.
Yeah, so we, council asked to have that report included because there was an issue with, with insurance, wanted to see work done on that. How do you feel like that progress is going?
I feel the progress is coming along as, as been requested. Um, I, I, as my input to that is the work was already there and they have a consistency and continuation of that. We have a good, uh, training program. I think that, um, providing the report to council and then making sure that that communication is with our provider so that they're staying aware of what we're doing and what we continue to do and the consistency and then they see the importance that, um, we place on, uh, our training and what we're doing to, to make sure we're meeting what's asked of us, um, from that perspective. But again, I'd like to come back to, we, we had these things in place and we continue to grow on them and we continue to improve on them. And so I'm just hopeful that, um, our, the insurance company will agree with that and, and look to set up a meeting with them mid-July, just to touch base and see what their thoughts are, see if they have any input. I know they, I know, um, they've attended a couple of our meetings and so, um. And haven't really reached out to me to say that they're not happy, so that's no news. It's good news for me on that. But I think it'll be a good time to touch base with them mid-July because that's when our, our work comp premium is in effect and we can go over and make sure we're meeting those, you know, standards that they said or what they asked of us, if there's anything else they, you know, would recommend that we could improve upon, so we can get that set, but.
Right.
Um, and then from my report, um, it, I've had minimal, I mean, I've stayed in contact with the developers. Um, so we don't lose sight, uh, but the bigger part of everything has been audit work. Um, as I noted and highlighted there, um, staying in communications with the, with the Rag Brag Steering Committee. Um, I'm looking to set a public safety meeting here towards the last week of June. Um, so we can wrap up, you know, get things prepared, any questions that we have. Um, again, the Rag Brag Steering Committee's done an amazing job. They, they've got everything set. Um, just a couple of pieces that we need to tie in and, and then again, for us working with the public works and all of our staff, which you'll see on our agenda tonight, I am asking for us to look at having all of our staff onboard that day. Um, so the week, week here, I mean, I've not heard back yet from whom I've been working with on that. Um, the last I knew that I said on, on the meeting was that there was some things that they needed to work out between the Department of Defense and, and some pieces of the programming and that they would be following up with us once they have that agreement ready to go. But, um, so anything other than that, if you have any question, you let me know. And then of course, Ally's here that she can take any questions that she has on her report.
I have. Ally, your report is always so thorough. Appreciate that. Any other questions by council on any of these reports? Okay, great. We will. Move on. Um. Committee meetings is next here. Council, are there any committee meetings that you've had you want to record on?
No.
Bet if done, we'll. Okay. We're gonna sit down.
I was just trying to think.
Okay.
Did we have any committee? No.
Yeah. We'll, we'll move on, excuse me, to vendor voucher claims. Uh, list number one is three hundred eighty-one thousand nine hundred ninety-two dollars and twenty-nine cents. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Okay, moved and seconded to approve this vendor voucher claims list. Any further discussion or questions? I have one. Nobody else does. Uh, just didn't get a chance to ask about this before, but lines thirty and thirty-one are both resco with no description and they're both identical.
They're transformers.
Pricing. Oh, they're transformers.
Transformers.
Two of them are transformers.
Yep, there are two different invoices for every purchases of transformers.
Yep. Good. That's a good sign. Who is buying transformers?
These are transformers that I that our communication from the utility committee um, along with our developments that I spoke with Ed and requested that we get to ordering so we can gear up and be ready for these developments, so he is currently working on building that inventory. Line item forty-one, it looks like we got squirrel guarding with transformers. So I'm curious if that is new squirrel guarding or is that just new for the new transformers or? You know? I do not, okay, I do not know, I will definitely follow it in the past, I know that we um, had some more than often power outages, I mean, it then for a while we seemed to have gone really well without having power outages and now all of a sudden be it attack of the squirrels or equipment failure. And Ed and I have had, you know, conversations with regards to that, so it's it's kind of half and half, like we talked at the last meeting, it's some squirrels, but some of it being equipment failure too with switches, so. Again, those would be conversations that I'll look forward to having with Ed and talking about how we can be proactive and what we're doing to make sure we know we have, you know, antiquated equipment or if we have equipment that's one, you know, where do we look for for replacing to be correct, so we're not running into it, and sometimes it's just it goes out and you gotta fix it, so.
Do you know if there have been more outages since our last meeting? Because at the last meeting, I think there were six recent outages, three due to squirrels, two equipment failure and one lightning.
I think we had another and I I'm apologizing, but everything kind of runs together. But I do believe there. Yeah, I was gonna say, I was thinking we had a power outage the same Saturday that we had the boil advisory. But that is the last, and again that was the last one that I know of that was due to. And and believe me, they sent me the pictures of issues. Either one, so. You can't argue picture something, but I guess. Well, that's what you could, but yeah, believable to me, so.
That's something that people reach out about sometimes. Any other questions about this vendor voucher claims list number one? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second to approve, all of them, favor say aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries three to zero, move to vendor voucher claims list number two and the amount of seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Oh, that's true.
Yeah, but we'll have to be tabled because you won't have.
Very good point. That was, that was mayor, mayoral right there. Okay, uh, then we need a motion to table it, I guess. Okay, there's a motion and a second to table, item seven B, any discussion? All of them, favor say aye. All opposed, no. Public comments and correspondence, is there anyone in the room that have public comments or correspondence? Council members, make your choice.
Around Karen Street, a little more than usual. Uh, individual mentions kind of more the east end, so you know, like the White Lock Cabinet is and that side street, and then the next one coming up towards town, those two side streets and then that part of there is always I feel like kind of maybe going back, we'll be apartments. Yes, they kind of recommend, I'd like to see maybe even someone, if I am, of course, allows kind of sit there too occasionally, maybe.
Um, I know that something that we had talked about before too was getting mobile solar power speed. Like saying, hey, this is your speed, and I don't know, at some point we'll want to revisit that, I do have a flyer for I don't remember what the company's name, but that's something that we could look into and I can see about getting smaller in the area on third. Would be a little hard. A good spot. But yeah, and on the side streets down where you're talking about, yeah, I can pass it along for sure.
First thing brought up, like, this must have happened a while ago, way before my understanding, but like, water meters? Like done by the city, or like water, and then then get like a credit back or something in the fall or?
Got an update on that.
Did you, okay, I have never heard of it until today and I heard from two people.
So. We, I believe we ended it in two thousand fifteen, we had a basically it was an additional meter that you could come in and sign out. And that you could then place mostly for gardening or watering your lawn. Um, and that it would track water usage and then you could come in and request a credit on your sewer. Um, you still have to pay for the water usage, but since it's not going down the sewer, then you can request the credit for the not going into the sewer. So Danny did some research and he was able to come up with um, the meters at a reasonable cost. And so we're working with him, we've been utilizing them for pool fills right now. Because we know the fire department has been busy and they've been limited on volunteers to do pool fills, so in the meantime, what we Danny came up with getting these meters to to assist with that, so we're gonna have a little more discussion to see what we could do to bring that back into a purchase for inventory and what we could do to create a procedure to you know, assign them out, the bigger part of the problem was is they wasn't coming back. And then they would be left out into in the winter and then they would freeze and crack and, you know, so again, it's just how can we create a procedure? And and maybe it's simply having our department go out and gather them and then read them when we're doing the meter reads from you know, at the end of the season, but those are things that we need to work out, but I'm glad to say that he took the initiative to to find us something that's reasonable and he feels good about, so. Yes, I have two things, I had an individual in town that was inquiring about diagonal parking on Spencer Street between Fourth and Third. They were interested or they were wondering why it is parallel right now there across from mural, it's on the, on north side of the alley, I don't know what.
Kind of right by the, by the mural.
Yeah, on the east side, yeah, to continue the diagonal parking, oh, going north on the east side of the Spencer Street. He, well, he's asking for after the alley to the stop sign on Fourth Street. If that can't be diagonal parking, so I just am passing on the.
Anyone know why, why the reason is, why that's?
Definitely be spacing because you're required to have a certain amount of spacing in order to allow, and then it could be visibility um, as well, but I will get with Adam to see if, and then maybe reach out to you, Leo. Um, because I think you assisted us on some spacing on some of our parking spaces here in our area. So I know it has something to do with the spacing and visibility, so.
Mr. Brooks, you had something to share?
I'm sure all the reasons are also valid, but there are some new businesses and a business expansion that are being pursued in that area. We think that we could look at more people in.
Yeah, yeah, he'd mentioned that there's possibly a business that would need some more parking and why he he thought there was parking like that diagonally at some point long ago. And then it got changed to parallel, maybe ten, fifteen years ago, I don't know. But he he was interested, we can't make that parallel, just, I mean I don't know, just on the east side, not on the west side, but on the east side, continue the parallel that that is on the side closest to Third Street. We, and I apologize with the word on the audit, if I missed some communication or if there's been anybody that's reached out. Um, but if the individual, I would invite them to contact me. My email would probably or by my city cellphone and then I can then I can, you know, collect what they're requesting and then I can get to work and and again, speak with the engineer. Um, speak with Adam, with the street department to see, you know, if because I I, since I've been in the community, I do not have, I don't remember that, but again, sometimes unless you're parking there, you you don't think about it, right? And again, we wanna support and make sure, I mean, I always, I mean, we talked about it, we would agree that let, you know, not having a parking space in our downtown area, I'm sure it's frustrating for shop owners, but it's a good thing when you don't have any parking spaces, even that means you gotta see that. Right, so.
Well, that would be, sounds like it would be great if it's possible to create more parking in the space we have, so. And if council's pursuing it, I believe fourth between Calhoun and Spencer is the same way, part of it is parallel and part of it is diagonal. So that's another space that if we are looking for more parking, that'd be another space, another area to consider, because that's one and part the other too. Louis, I think is parallel and then further east, it's then diagonal. And again, I don't know what the historical context, why it's partially, well, partially the other.
You're absolutely right, yeah, I I see that.
But that'd be another chance that if we're, if I need more businesses, we could get more parking divided all diagonal and those both this intersection here at Calhoun and the intersection of Spencer, four-way stop, so the visibility people have to stop anyway, so I think that visibility would be as big of an issue, but I'd be because of the proximity to downtown and the library, we have a lot of foot traffic, so having the four-way stops is. Would council just wanna ask City Hall to evaluate, you know, kind of all these spots downtown and just see where more parking could be created?
Yep, yeah, when you have
Where else?
And then chief, because chief and I also have, you know, a list of stop signings and some other signage that again, we need to get with our building and our public safety to have that, and so hopefully maybe after the first of July, you can get a committee meeting scheduled. Or by the end of summer or something, yeah. And we, I definitely will, if you wanna give me an opportunity to know who I do the job to, I certainly do wanna follow up and or I can look with Ken as well, so. Absolutely. We can make that our priority first and then chief and I work together on those other sections. And then I had a second request from some residents on the three hundred block of Third Street and Fourth Street. They share an alley between Third and Fourth. And that alley on that block, they wanted to know if they could kind of what's called, suppress the dust or put something on the alley to suppress the dust. They they said it was an apple syrup or an apple. I think apple syrup is what he, what they said, they put on and it stops the the dust from, you know, when the, when the cars go down. But they were even, they even mentioned that they wanted to pay for it themselves, but if they would be allowed to do it. So I'm, I'm just. Yeah, I mean, again, if you would, if you were sure who reached out to you, so I can have that. I mean, I have that conversation with Adam and then we can connect them and they can have that decision and. Sure, sure, yeah. We may even have something that we already utilize, but again, if they're wanting to be and much as we try to be environmental friendly, um, there may, there may be something more with that that's even better, so. And those are the only two I have.
Thank you, everybody. We do have some new business here. Starting with nine A. Discussion and appropriate follow-up on city employees to work the Rag Right twenty twenty-three event. Is there a motion to bring this to discussing?
Mr. Council. I would, I'm asking so I can schedule staff to work that event. Um, again, know that it would most likely run into overtime for staffing, however, given the numbers that are being communicated that we're anticipating. There's simply just not enough volunteers and within our city staff, we have folks that are already knowledgeable when it comes to directing street traffic, um, you know, making sure we're monitoring and managing you know, what needs to be handled in our downtown areas. So from a public safety perspective and a sanitation perspective, um, I wanted the opportunity to have your consent approval to uh, schedule that as a workday for staff. I certainly could ask them to come in and volunteer their time and I have no doubt that there are some of them that would do that. However, I think that it would be beneficial to them to be able to be paid for their time. Because again, I think these are the key personnel that we're gonna need to lean on to make this successful for the Rag Right Steering Committee, but most importantly um, with our public safety from traffic and traffic safety and Do you think staff members are like, are they okay with that? Like, nobody's gonna be mad that they have to work a Sunday and Well, the bigger part of it is, council member Smith, I think most of them are gonna, they're gonna be here from ours, you know, from our garbage and our streets, so I think that you know, it's just gonna be, you know, a little more helpful to bring in and say, it's not just you because you're public works. This is for the entire organization, so then they don't feel as singled out because of their department. We're gonna say if if this, these departments are gonna be here, we're all gonna be here, that's, that was kind of my like you said.
Makes sense to me. Any other comments or thoughts about this? Has the committee been successful in recruiting volunteers for the event as well, or a lot of people? I know it just takes a whole, a whole.
Yeah, and I'm Brittany, I mean, I would lean on you because Brittany's been attending the steering committees in my place. So based on what I understand, they they've had, but again, when you're talking participants of this size. I mean, even when you put us in there and and however many volunteers they have, and I know West Liberty Foods, I believe they're providing volunteers, you know, so I mean, there's corporations and there's other businesses that are out there having staffing assist with that day, but it it looks to be a pretty big event, so.
I know another big one, they've reached out to a lot of the volunteer groups. I know I just saw a post recently, they're reaching out through the PTO group for more volunteers and sending that out to all of the parents and school as well. They can't go directly through to the
Because of that no contact.
That no, for the schools, it falls right in the period where students can't be contacted.
They can be contacted by their coaches or teachers, but they can be contacted by the Rotary Club.
So they're yeah, being very creative on circumventing that and getting parents involved um, to break it in. to break it then and stuff like that and look at the record options for that too. I know Charles has also reached out to West Branch for vendors and I think he was going to check with Wilton as well.
Sounds like it's coming together. How many hours were you thinking where the city staff for that day?
So.
Be able for them to pay them for.
So I mean, I would like to say five, but again, I know for some departments, it's gonna probably be a full eight-hour day, um, just from cleaning up and putting, you know, but I think that if we're all working together, then we can make that, we can keep it to a minimum at that point, so. Because again, first riders typically will come through real early in the morning. But it's my understanding, the bigger part of them are gonna come through, probably hit eight AM, you know, we'll keep steady until all right up until eleven eight, um, so it's and again, especially they, I mean, I'm basing it on the numbers that they keep predicting. And so, and, and yeah, we can have a steady stream that whole entire time, which means a bigger time for cleanup. But again, putting this all together as a team. Hopefully we can minimize it, so. Um, I'd love to be able to flex their time somewhere else in the week, but with most of them being, you know, hourly employees, then it's time and a half.
Great. We have a motion and a second to, uh, well, is there a consensus? I guess in this one, we're looking for consensus here. To allow, excuse me, city manager Gertz to, uh, make this a workday. Does that's?
Yep.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries three to zero.
Thank you, council.
We'll look at a economic development matching funds grant application for the West Liberty Locker and Processing. Is there a motion to? Is there a second? Okay, it's moved and seconded to approve this application. Mr. Brooks, is there anything you'd like to add to this for us here? We have a big work.
Yep, so the locker submitted a successful application through DSTA for an expansion project, which is almost complete now, driven out there, really exciting. They've more than doubled their their, their sales space, their, their shop floor, if you will, uh, which is going to allow them to achieve the next level certification that they need. Really exciting because that means they're going to be able to sell the products, not only their, their shop as they have before, but also in, in local places, so. A local business here could then choose to sell products from, from the locker, which they've not previously been able to do.
Oh, I didn't realize that. So this, this allowed you to have that certification.
So, uh, yeah, they made some changes on, on the, the work side, uh, but then they doubled their, their shop side too. The grant and then their matching funds for that were enough to do the actual construction of that on the inside, but not the outside. So you're specifically pressing the city on a piece of dollars to help clean up the outside, extend the covered kind of on any porch that they have an original building, they have nice on, on the new addition. Likewise, they have some residential front doors. They would like to upgrade those with something that would be more fitting.
If you've ever had their beef sticks, you will know. Also smoked pork chops. This is, uh, gonna be a huge benefit if they're able to sell those more broadly. Excellent. Any further questions?
Mister Mayor Council, it would be my recommendation.
Excellent. Then we have a motion, a second and recommendation to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I, I'll oppose, no. Motion carries three to zero, following the same, uh, application for economic development matching funds grant for SGA, their motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve. Mr. Brooks, you wanna focus on this one as well?
Yes, this would be the entire shop project across with BP. So as a reminder, um, Travis Shield and SCA Construction are putting in a commercial space and two ADA compliant apartments on the ground floor and then three, three-bedroom apartments up on the second floor. We've received some state financing through IDA, um, we've successfully applied for that. Part of that is that the city entered into a development agreement with Mr. Shield. In that agreement, the city did pledge twenty-five thousand dollars towards that project. You were asking that you fulfill that and then the PUS grant process. Specifically, I wrote for the dry, the interior drywall. It's just one part of the, the project that actually ready to do here next week. So that as soon as that floor is complete, you can then request to reimburse that, so that money can go to extension.
Mister Mayor and Council, since we've entered into that agreement, it would be your recommendation to approve that application.
There's a, there's a hundred thousand dollars set aside, I believe, for this type of grant. For each fiscal year, where, where does this put the city for current fiscal year?
I, I would, I, I don't have the numbers with me right now. It wasn't prepared.
This will be our last allocation for this fiscal year and will be just, just under.
Just under that amount? Excellent. Any further questions? We have a, a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carries three to zero. We have then a resolution to accept and approve the bid for the sale of the twenty-eleven Chevrolet Prius from the police department. Is there a motion to approve?
Yeah, second.
Moved and seconded to approve this resolution. Chief Wurling, can you, uh?
Uh, I'm able to give it to our deputy or our city clerk, thank you, uh, because she really got this rolling. She helped me with a template for what to put in the bid process, but she really uprun it and I was unavailable to look through the bid, so I will defer to her.
All right, so we posted it, um, and we did just local posting, so we posted it on our board and we posted it on our website and we still were able to receive all of these that you guys see on the resolution.
It's a long, good list.
It is a good list. Um, we were actually really surprised, myself and Deputy Clerk Ryan Hart, actually were the ones that opened the bids and the highest bid that came in was the forty-five hundred and it would be our recommendation to proceed forward so that we can dispose of the property.
Excellent. Any further questions? We have a motion and a second for this resolution, the resolution, so it's a roll call vote. Any further discussion? Councilmember McFerrin?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Resolution passes three to zero. We have a resolution to transfer funds for the fiscal year ending June thirty of twenty twenty-three. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve. I think we've probably talked through all this and understand most of this. But i- is there anything you wanna touch on?
Yep, there are just the budgeted transfers that are in your budget that we moved from your local option sales tax to general fund to library person rec portions. The benefited levy funding that if you remember right when we did the budget, we identified those. The ambulance reserve, again, just to be clear, that based on this, this is expenditures over revenue and it is only for, um, so I guess I would like to say is that any attorney fees and, um, the benefits that we're able to levy for is not a part of that transfer. That transfer is mostly operations, but the larger part of it is the employee costs.
So it's operations and, and employee costs, payroll and benefits, et cetera.
The, the IFRS and your insurance are levy for.
This, this is the budgeted amount that was budgeted, though, correct?
We did a budget amendment because they had brought on some more staffing.
Right.
Yeah.
Any questions by council? Hey, we have a motion and a second to approve this resolution. Again, it's a roll call vote. Councilmember McFerrin?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero. We have a resolution to approve pay estimate number four from All American Concrete for the Rainbow Maxon Street project. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, second.
Moved and seconded to approve and I'll look at you again, Mr. Foley, if you wanna catch up at speed.
Okay, this is a, a, um, pay estimate for eighty-four thousand nine hundred eighty-two dollars in system incentives. It brings you to about thirty-three percent complete on the project. Like a lot of road projects, they're somewhat slow getting started and that's where they're at right now. They're just now finishing what I would call their first phase. Um, the access to subway is now completely open. There shouldn't be any issues any longer when all these yielded a couple of phone calls as I have, when concrete trucks were in the way. But that should be done and usually this next phase, which will be get them to about ninety percent, goes pretty fast. So you'll start seeing much bigger pay estimates the next two, three months. And things in general are going really well. Very standard road project. But we recommend the, the reason this one's coming now, we did one two weeks ago or whenever last meeting was, is because we're not having one in the first five of July and so we let them move it in early.
I, I know you talked, uh, last time about how they probably weren't gonna be there every single day. They kind of have multiple projects going on at once. What's your feel on the, on the timeline? Is it typical or we, are we?
We're pretty standard, yeah, because what they do is they get started, they try to get their subs going, which they did. And some are doing a lot of the underground piping and things like that. And then they had other jobs they had to finish. They get their other jobs done and now they'll come in pretty hard the next two, three months to get it going. Like I said, I'd call it very standard, standard scheduling. They have till the end of this year to get it done. They I know All American, they'll wanna have it done by Thanksgiving because you have problems with cold weather after that. They'll get it done. They have till December, as we talked about that.
Any other questions by council? Where are we on the sidewalk? Know we talked about, were we still waiting, I think, on?
Still waiting on Leo Foley to do a little more communication with the DOT.
Okay.
They have asked me for a few things and I haven't gotten back to them and it's been about two weeks, so that's a very good reminder. The ball is in my court right now. We, it took Lee and I
Oh, yeah.
Five different times to get the right people. One lady told me, I am in charge. This is mine. I gave her some information. I thought we were going great. Next thing I know, that wasn't mine. I'm sorry. You need to go to somebody else.
No, sure.
So we've now been through it a few times. They knew the old area engineer, we have all the history cases as well as a few other of the openings, so I think we were on the right track. But they are asking me to provide them some drawings, updates to what we had, and I need to get that to them. So I think I can get that to them next week easily.
Okay. Excellent.
Well, just on, on the positive side of that, All American Concrete has the, you probably saw the opening and they have the plans and they haven't given us a cost estimate yet. We told them to use their existing items, which they said they would and add a few and of things they needed, like if they needed additional grading. And that hasn't come back to us yet, but I haven't pushed them yet for it either, but it's in their hands and they're very well aware of what, what to do.
Okay. Sounds good. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this resolution to approve the pay estimate. Any further discussion? It is a roll call vote. Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember McFerrin?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero.
Thank you.
And we have finally, and thank you, we have finally a resolution to approve reimbursement to West L for their matching fund grant. Your motion to approve?
Motion.
It is moved and seconded.
Is there a child here?
That was, that right there was the most fun I've ever had in town. So thanks for that. Oh, boy. Moving and seconded to approve. Mister Brooks, do you wanna? Catch up to speed on this one?
Yeah, so I included a couple of pictures there. I guess the facade work that was the thing that was sell Salona Boutique. They did a great job putting that all together. If you'll agree, one of those pictures that had was also a student from West Liberty Elementary School that threw a junior achievement class with you.
Come be in the picture.
Yep, we provided some ice cream after the tour of them. So there's the bribery. But I think you'll agree that was a much needed facelift for that part of the.
It looks so nice, so classy.
Very classy and it, it, it exceeded my expectation what could be done with that, with the building and all the facade, so. Did an excellent job and it would be my recommendation, Mister Mayor Council, to approve that ring.
Excellent. We have a motion and a second and a recommendation. Uh, any further discussion? It is then a roll call vote. Councilmember Schultz?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember McFerrin?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero.
Yes, Mister Fair, I have a motion to adjourn, please.
Okay. Moved and seconded to adjourn. Any discussion?
No.
All those, all those in favor say aye. We remind you that, uh, our next council meeting is, uh, next would be regular scheduled council meeting is canceled for July fourth. So I'll see you all again at the end of July. Thanks, meeting adjourned.